Good to go.
Okay, all righty folks, we'll go ahead before we get started with our next docketed item. I'd like to just announce, so if there's anyone on this meeting today, the Zoom call, docket PZ 21005, which was the Brownsboro Woods Phase Two, has been deferred and it will be on the docket for our March 23 Planning Commission meeting. So if you're on this call expecting to hear that docket, it will not be heard today. It will be deferred until our March 23 meeting. So with that, I'll call on Ms. Hightew to read our next docketed item, please.
Docket PZ dash 21 dash 003, application has been filed by Elite Built Homes for the approval of a preliminary subdivision plan for 140 lots on approximately 81.65 acres to be known as Holly Gibson Phase Two. The property is located at 8809 Holly Gibson Road Crestwood. The zoning is R2 Residential and CO1 Conservation Residential.
Okay, thank you. And before we get started with staff's introduction for that docket, just like to announce that Bob Klingenfuss signed off here. He's having technical issues with his computer and I think that's where the echo was coming from. So he is, he will not be on the rest of the dockets today. So that's Bob Klingenfuss. So with that, call on staff then to introduce the next docket, please.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be presenting the Holly Gibson Two. At this point, I'll begin a screen share. Okay, everyone hear clearly?
Yes.
Wonderful. All right, as Ms. Hightew stated, an application I've been filed by Elite Homes for the approval of a preliminary subdivision plan for 140 lots on approximately 81.65 acres to be known as Holly Gibson Phase Two. The property is located at 8809 Holly Gibson Road in Crestwood. Zoning is R2 Residential and CO1 Conservation. Here we have an aerial. You can see Floyd's Fork is back here and this green area over here is Shelby County. Again, here's a pavement map followed by the zoning map. Case history, the neighborhood meeting was held on December 3 of 2020. TRC was held on December 16 of 2020. Adjoning property owner notices were mailed on the 3rd of this month and the public notice in the Autumn era was on the 11th. For site history, on September 25, 2018, the Oldham County Planning Commission recommended approval of a zoning map amendment of R2 Residential to CO1 Conservation and CO1 Conservation, R2 Residential on 53.76 acres. The total tract size was 147.18 acres to Oldham County Fiscal Court on a vote of 11 to 0. That was docket PZ 18019. The Planning Commission also approved a development plan on these same acreage, which was docket PZ 18020. On December 4 of 2018, Oldham County Fiscal Court approved the zoning map amendment on a vote of 8 to 0. On May 28 of 2019, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved a development plan on approximately 65.53 acres, which was Holly Gibson Section 1 and that was docket PZ 19010. Again, the applicant is proposing a single-family subdivision consisting of 140 single-family lots on approximately 81.65 acres to be known as Holly Gibson Road Subdivision Number 2. The plan outlines one detention basin and the homes will be served by sanitary sewer. The plan also outlines 27.17 acres of open space. A traffic assessment was completed for the proposed development and determined that no potential problems were identified during the assessment. Therefore, no additional analysis is recommended and no mitigation is necessary to maintain roadway capacity as a result of this development. That traffic assessment was included in your packet. Lastly, the plan meets all other zoning and subdivision regulations. Again, here's the plan. The area in blue is the open space of 27.17 acres. The detention basin is shown in red, or not red, purple at the bottom down here. Here's a view looking north on Holly Gibson Road. Again, we're further up Holly Gibson, just looking north. Here we are on Holly Gibson, looking down Francis Avenue. Here we are on Francis Avenue, looking again towards the subject property. Here we are looking north again up Holly Gibson Road, continuing north from Francis Avenue. Here we are looking south. Again, here's existing entrance to the property, looking north. And here is the, just looking south. Proposed binding elements of the approval applies only to the plan presented at the February 23, 2021 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing. There shall be no subdivision of any lot into a greater number of lots without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. The preliminary plan must comply with all established federal, state and county ordinances and requirements at the time of approval and no record plat will be approved until all standards are satisfied. The cumulative phasing plan shall limit the number of building permits issued to 24 per year with the first record plat. Be happy to answer any questions at this time. You're on mute, Mr. Chairman.
There we go. Before we get into the questions, Mr. Solomon, do you have any comments? Or is Mr. Williams on from the Oldham County School Board?
Yes, I've got, I've got a few comments. Again, thank you, Jim Solomon, Oldham County Engineer. So we provided a letter to Ms. Alvy, which she can share with the applicant, summarizing some of our review comments. I'll give you a summary of that today or now. Understanding there are some, we've identified some blue line streams within the project area. The applicant will need to coordinate with Army Corps of Engineers and the Kentucky Division of Water for 401 and 404 permitting requirements on that. Additionally, as, as is typical, the the development's greater than one acre, as such, they'll need to apply for Kentucky, Kentucky Division of Water KYR10 permit, as well as the Oldham County Stormwater Quality Management and Erosion Control Permit. When they do so, they will submit their construction plans to our office for review. This is just a preliminary plan they've submitted, so there's really no sufficient detail to review the, the design specifics, including, you know, radii, pavement widths. We understand that will come with the construction plans. There are no sidewalks shown, but based on the lot width, sidewalks would be required in accordance with the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations. There's also a floodplain boundary shown. We were going to ask that the designer provide confirmation of that floodplain boundary. We were getting the same coordination with regard to the Section 1 plan that's currently under review for construction plan review. Did have a chance to review the traffic assessment. I don't have any revisions to the traffic assessment. It seems accurate. I will note that with the Section 1 plans, construction plans that we have, there is additional right-of-way being provided by the applicant for that section along Holly Gibson Road. So in the event roadway modifications were required, it appears there would be sufficient right-of-way there provided. That's, that's my summary. Thank you.
All righty, Mr. Irving, you have anything to add?
Well, just, Mr. Solomon, is it fair to say that all of those things that you mentioned are part of the construction plan submission and approval?
That is, that is correct.
Just for the benefit of the commissioners, I don't think there needs to be a binding element that states that because we have a general one that says that must comply with all federal, state and local laws and ordinances.
That is correct. All these, all these would be covered by the regulations, ordinances currently in place with Oldham County.
All right, Mr. Irving, is Mr. Williams on today from the Oldham County School Board?
I can't see everybody in the gallery. Let's see, quick, Amy, do you see, is Michael here? You can speak up, Michael.
Okay, well, they, he attached the school capacity form and it looks like the phasing rate that, that they would approve is 24 units per year. Is that what I'm seeing here?
Yes, and, but in the staff report on item number four for proposed binding elements, it writes out 23, but then in parentheses says 24, so it is 24.
Okay.
It should be binding element number four, or proposed binding element number four.
Okay, all righty. Well, commissioners, do you have any questions for staff on this docket at this point? Mr. McIntyre, I guess, go ahead and let's go back to the screen view with the, yeah, there we go. All right, any, yes, Mr. Douglas?
Yes, this is for staff, of course, and I was wondering if anyone in the staff had any concerns of lots 39 through 70 appearing to be largely in the FEMA floodplain zone according to Section 5.9 of our regulations.
Well, the floodplain is listed on the back of the lots and as the floodplain coordinator, I can't issue any building permits for any homes that are in the floodplain unless they are elevated. And the way I see the plan is that all of the building sites, based on the proposed setback, front yard setback would be out of the floodplain.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, even though the floodplain is on the back of the property, that's not where the construction will go.
Well, the only thing I saw was on lots 39 to 70. It appears that they're cutting right through the middle of the flood. That was the only question I have and I knew you were the coordinator, so.
All right, any additional questions from, from commissioners?
Well, and Mr. Chairman, if I can, that's a good question. We asked the applicant to make sure that I'm correct, that their building sites would be outside of the floodplain.
Yeah, we'll ask that question to them. All right, Mr. King, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do, this may be for the applicant, but I'm just curious about what appears to be a stub, stubb street from adjacent property, stubbing into the property and what considerations were given to not connecting on that stub?
I will defer that question to the applicant.
Yeah, good question for the applicant.
Anything else, Mr. King?
For staff? Oh, we got, thank you.
All right, anyone else have any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none or seeing no hands go up. We'll now move into the presentation by the applicant or representatives and others in support of the application. And you have 50 minutes and I assume, Mr. Talbot, you'll be taking the lead on this and I'd like to get whoever will be speaking on behalf of this application sworn in while Ms. Hightew.
Mr. Chair, that will be me, Kevin Young, perhaps Mike Hill and also Scott Adams from Clayton Homes Elite.
All right, we'll get him sworn in and then we'll get everybody's name and address for the record. It's not you?
We solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay, Mr. Talbot, you have 50 minutes.
Mr. Chair, this is John Talbot at Barton-Werper Talbot and Roberts, Louisville, Kentucky. The address is 1,000 North Hurstform Parkway. Thank you so much for your time. I'm confident we will not need anything close to the 50 minutes that has been allotted. Tom, are you able to pull our, our PowerPoint up on the screen?
Yep, shouldn't be a problem.
While he's looking for that, the address for this is 8809 Holly Gibson Road. Again, as Tom mentioned, this is for a subdivision with 140 lots. You all, you all who have been on the planning commission for the last couple of years are probably very familiar with this site. As Tom, in taking you through the history, this originally, this piece of property, in fact, a little bit of addition to this piece of property, I think it was a total of about 150 acres, came up for rezoning in September of 2018 and that was subsequently approved unanimously at fiscal court later in December of that year. Effectively, what that rezoning did is the property before parts of it were zoned R2, parts of it were zoned CO1. And as you can see from this first slide, the property continues to be zoned R2 and part of it's CO1. The reason for that rezoning is that the lines when they were put over the map were not done terribly precisely. So what we've seen in a handful of cases where you have areas next to waterways and so forth, the lines were, would obviously should be CO1 or not and they, they overlap. So effectively, even though it was rezoned, it was really more of a correction to put the zoning the way it was originally intended. And that went through in the latter part of 2018. Afterwards, in May of 2019, our law firm was representing another developer with the subdivision plan on Section 1. That has all been purchased now by the current applicant, Elite Homes. They are developing Section 1 and here we are today on the Section 2 that you'll see in the map, but effectively it's just the second half of that 150 or so acres that we're now coming forward for preliminary subdivision plan. One thing that I wanted to note is that with the preliminary subdivision plan, unlike a zoning change, unlike a conditional use permit and unlike a, a plan where you would be requesting waivers and variances, this is a ministerial act. This is not a discretionary decision. Effectively, the question is, do we comply with the subdivision regulations? From the staff report, Mr. McIntyre, it's evident that we do. We're not requesting any variances or waivers and so from a ministerial standpoint, under the law, we should be approved for that. And not to take it away from you, your, your commission typically wants to vote on preliminary subdivision plans, but just to give you an idea of how ministerial this act is, your own regulations in the subdivision regs, Section 3.3, Step 3, says that in this type of case, you don't even have to have a public hearing. And so your county typically goes over and board, what is the minimum? And we applaud you for that. You obviously like to stay up on what is being approved. But nevertheless, this should be a pretty simple approval of this subdivision plan. If you could roll down to the next slide, Tom. This shows the area and I think Tom gave a general assessment of this. You can see Persimmon Ridge Golf Club and I'm certain you all are familiar with the subdivision to that side to the east. There are some R2 subdivisions to the west and a little bit of R2 and some agricultural to the north and then some agricultural to the south. The future land use map identifies this area as being expected to be single-family, which is what we're bringing with the subdivision plan and indeed is in compliance with the rezoning. Please go to the next slide. This shows the aerial of the site and what you can see in the red is our current subdivision plan. This is for the 140 lots on the, the gross 81.65 acres. The net acreage is 72.67. You also can see to the left of that red bordered property, a sort of gray area with some green. This is Section 1. Again, that's the prior section that was approved in May of 2019. And we put that on the map, not because it's part of this, but so that you can fully see where this site currently fits in. Next slide, please. This slide is one of the slides that we had for May 2019. Generally, what I wanted to show in this, if you look in the green areas, and this is not absolutely precise, but it should give you a pretty good idea where the CO1 property is. It basically is around the borders of the property that we're here for today. And then in the middle, where you see Section 2 in the white, that is the R2 property. What you'll see on the development plan is that all of the lots are on the R2 area. Again, so we're in compliance with the zoning and the CO1 and also some of the R2 is, is placed into the open space. That'll be protected. Next slide, please. And here's the close-up of the development plan that shows Section 1 that was previously approved. And then again, to the right is our Section 2. And I'm going to let Kevin Young from Land Design and Development take over at this point. And Kevin, the next slide shows the close-up of the development plan. And so if you want to move on to that one, feel free.
All right, thank you, John. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we appreciate the time. Kevin Young, Land Design and Development, 503 Worsford, Louisville, 40222. I'll start off here and then go, Tom and John kind of went through the outline of the property, but you can see before this development plan was created, we had the stubb street from Section 1 located in the upper left corner of the property. We have Pierce Way stubbing to the back right corner or upper right corner of the property. And you can see Floyd's Fork wrapping around the, basically the right and left or lower portion of our property. And between Section 1 and Section 2, you can see an area that we've kept in green. As when we first started this plan or developing this subdivision plan, the first thing, one of the first things we did was have Red Wing Environmental come out and look at the properties. So the area between Section 1 and 2 is an environmentally sensitive area. It is Zone CO1, so it is being kept in open space. You can also see a green space between the, the two sections of lots that we have on Phase 2. That is also identified as an intermittent stream. So we are putting that in open space to protect. Up by Pierce Way, you can see an open space lot there on the right that had a piece of intermittent blue line stream that we are keeping in open space that is also Zone CO1. And then you have the Floyd's Fork and the CO1 that wraps the property. So Tom, with you, advance this slightly. This is a blow-up of our property. I talked to you about their stub road in the upper left. These are all R2 lots, keeping within keeping with Phase 1 of this property. Being that this property kind of comes back and we are surrounded by Floyd's Fork, I wanted to make sure we had a loop road designed in here. Didn't want to put a cul-de-sac and have people coming way back into the development and not being able to get back. So part of the design parameters was to create a roadway network for, if you live here, you can walk around, if you drive delivery trucks, everybody's got a way to circle around within the development, also protecting those environmentally sensitive areas that I mentioned. You can see in several locations there in green, I think that helps identify we have access into our open space so people can utilize it just for homeowners association for maintenance, who want to have the opportunity to get into that open space in several different locations to protect it. The question about Pierce Way, so as part of this subdivision plan, one of our requirements at the beginning, as you're all aware, is we do a technical review. Pierce, when we actually do the pre-application before we even get started, prior to the technical review, Pierce was identified as a substandard road and not adequate to make a roadway connection without major improvements. Pierce has been there. It's, it's an older established neighborhood. So what we determined and I think through consultation with staff was putting a pedestrian connection. So the two residents from Pierce and from this development had the opportunity to walk back and forth, but it was not deemed to be a good solution to make a physical connection with the roadway where cars would be able to traverse Pierce. And it's, it's not, it's a very substandard road. So that was the determination that was made through the preliminary phase or pre-application in TPC or TRC. And that's the green connection made there is a pedestrian connection is to keep the connection for, for residents, but not for vehicles. To speak a little bit about the floodplain, this is a Zone A FEMA mapping. A Zone A means that it is, it's non-detailed, meaning it hasn't had a flood setting on it. So that is an approximation of where the floodplain is. As part of Phase 1 of this project, I've got, I'm sorry, I didn't start off. But Mike Hill is here with me and Eric Sand, professional engineer. Eric and his group have started the detailed study of the floodplain. We're quite sure that it doesn't come up into the property as shown here. As part of the Zone A shows it, as part of this plan, Mr. Urban mentioned, no structures will be allowed to be within the floodplain. And how we do that is we'll do a detailed study of that and we'll prepare a, what's that called there? A LOMAR. It's a letter of map revision and we'll submit that to FEMA. And basically what that does is remap that blue line that we have on our plan and puts it into a mapped area. So it'll be a studied area. And if any area that, if you had a draw or so forth, we have on the lower portion there a compensation detention basin. So any fill that would be taken into the floodplain, we will remove that fill material out of that compensation basin, which I'm talking to you. I'm hoping you all can see the rectangle or basin down there on the lower portion. So that becomes a compensation basin. If we have to place any fill in the floodplain and so we create, if we put a bucket of dirt in the field floodplain, we have to take a bucket of dirt out of the floodplain. So that's part of that. And it also acts as a detention basin. We talked about that on all of our subdivisions, all the developments, that'll be a compensation slash detention basin. So our proposals for 140 single-family lots, I think it is a very interesting design for property. We're able to protect environmentally sensitive areas. In the CO1 zoning and remapping that the commission did also was a, you know, it's just a safety factor to put on there that we're, we're recognizing and honoring as part of this plan. I think I've talked about, I've talked about everything and John, if you have any more questions, I'll be, be here to answer them. Here me and John.
Kevin, if I could ask you just to comment very briefly, I, I'm pretty certain from the, from TRC that we comply with fire protection standards, sewer capacity standards and all the other regulations. Is that correct?
That is correct. And we got a lot of information on sewers if anybody wants to hear the details of that, but we, yes.
Thank you very much. Just to move on, this slide is a slide that we typically use in rezoning cases. Again, it's not really relevant to this case to the extent that we're underneath since we do not violate any of the regulations for R2. But I did want to point out the things, just to the extent that this is a ministerial approval, even in those cases, I wanted to give it some kind of color to the plan. So you could see that we're not trying to put too much on this piece of property. As you can see, the, the density that's permitted for R2 is 3.63 dwelling units per acre. We're well underneath that, even using the net standard, which would give us a higher figure of 1.92. The lot count, obviously 140 is well below the maximum lot count of approximately 263 units. In, in Oldham County, you will pride yourselves on larger lots. The minimum square footage is 12,000 square foot for R2. In this case, we have several lots that are well in excess of that. There's one that is even nearly 27,000 square feet, so more than double the required minimum. And there are several others that are far in excess as well. That certainly is the largest. The open space again is really significant, 27 acres plus out of the net acreage of 72.67. And so we're providing a lot of open space. And again, as Kevin rightfully pointed out, this is being placed in areas that would be CO1 and that would have some environmental concerns. We wanted to make sure we protect those. There are no design standards, but we will also be showing you some of the, the sample elevations that we have for this site. Tom, if you could go to the next slide, please. This slide, I was speaking to Mr. Urban. There was some question, although we're not required. There was some desire to make certain that there was enough right-of-way on Holly Gibson to allow a left turn lane to be put in, in the future, if ever was required by the county. And indeed, we do have that. This slide shows it. I won't go into all the detail unless the commissioners have specific questions about it. But there is sufficient right-of-way on Holly, Holly Gibson Section 1 currently to allow left turn lane to put in sometime in the future. Next slide, please. I'm going to go, you can just flip through these very quick, Tom. These are the same slides that Tom effectively showed leading up into the site. And again, you'll see this road is of sufficient width to meet the minimum standards for road construction or access to a subdivision. And the next, Tom, you can continue just to kind of slowly generate through them. These are some sample elevations that we would have. So these should give a general idea of the general, of the differences in size, the type of materials that would be used. Some would have front entry garages, some would have side entry garages. Tom, is that, there you go. And that will bring us to the end of our case in chief on our presentation. We'll reserve the rest of our time for rebuttal and also for closing. And we're ready for any questions that you all might have. So thank you very much for your time.
Okay, we'll get to the questions here just a little bit, Mr. Talbot. But is there anyone on the Zoom call? Okay. We'll get to the questions here just a little bit, uh, Mr. Talbot, but, uh, uh, is there anyone, uh, on the Zoom call that would like to speak in support of this application at this point?
Uh, I think from our team, we're going to hold for questions. I didn't know if there's anyone else from the public though.
Well, right. Well, we'll get, you know, they'll have an opportunity here just a little bit. Um, Mr. Racket Harry, could you go back to the, uh, gallery view, please? What, uh, is there anyone else on the call that would like to speak in support of this application at this point? Okay. Seeing none, we'll now ask for testimony and questions, the questions by those opposing the application. Is there anyone on here that would like to testify or have questions, uh, opposing this application? I don't see or hear anyone. All right. With that, we'll then move into questioning of the applicant and those and those opposing application by the commission. I didn't hear anybody opposing the application. So this point we'll open it up for commissioners. Do you have any questions for the applicant? Any questions for the applicant? I don't see any hands or hear anyone. All right. Last, last call for any questions. All right. With that, we'll move into Mr. Talbot, uh, final statement of the applicant.
Uh, I'll be, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be very brief on this. Again, uh, I think that the fact that we have not had any opposition and just by the scarcity of questions shows what a really excellent job, uh, land design and development and the applicant have done in bringing this case forward. Uh, we are in compliance with all the zoning. Uh, we are not requesting any waivers or variances. And we are in compliance with all the regulations, um, or a compliance with the subdivision regulations, the school capacity standards, the fire protection standards, sewer capacity standards and environmental and the flood damage prevention ordinance. So to the extent that there's any question about any regulations, uh, as, uh, Mr. Urban pointed out, that would be part of our binding elements that says we have to comply with those things. Some of which, some of those standards would not be addressed until, uh, the construction plans are put up for approval. So those would be down the line. But at this point, we are in compliance with everything. This is a ministerial approval and we look forward to your vote and thank you so much for your all's time.
Okay, Mr. Talbot, with that, uh, docket PZ two, one, zero, zero, three is completed. And, uh, now as always, a call on Mr. Urban to outline what's being requested on this preliminary subdivision plan approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is a request for a preliminary subdivision plan on, uh, approximately 81.65 acres on Holly Gibson Road. It's part of a nut, a bigger, uh, development plan that has already been through the planning commission. As always, you have proposed motions in your staff report, starting on page two. There are, uh, four proposed binding elements. The first is that the approval applies only to the plan presented at the February 23rd, 2021 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing. Number two is there shall be no subdivision of any lot into a greater number of lots without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. Number three, the preliminary plan must comply with all established federal, state and county ordinances and requirements at the time of the approval and no record plat shall be approved until all standards are satisfied. And number four is the cumulative phasing plan shall limit the number of building permits issued to 24 per year, beginning with the first record plat for section two. Uh, that said, I know that the, uh, question regarding the floodplain was raised. And this is a little bit borderline testimony, but I know that, uh, the applicant is well versed in what's called minimum opening elevations. And I'm sure that before we issue a permit on any of those lots in question and have floodplain in the backyard, we, we will establish what that is. You heard testimony from, uh, the applicant's, uh, representative, Mr. Young, that they'll look at the floodplain and do a LOMAR if that's what it, it takes. Uh, but I don't think we necessarily have to put that as a binding element. That's, that's just a requirement in order to get a building permit. So, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, with that, the chair would now entertain a motion on docket PZ two, one, zero, zero, three, which is the, uh, preliminary subdivision plan for 140 lots on approximately 81.65 acres known as Holly Gibson Phase Two. We have a motion. Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'd like to move for approval of the, uh, preliminary subdivision plan as submitted based on evidence and testimony. Find that the, uh, uh, the applicant, the application is, uh, consistent with the, the objectives of comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations. I additionally find it meaningful that there is an absence of opposition testimony. And, uh, I would like to incorporate the, the proposed binding elements as noted by Mr. Urban into this motion.
All right. Mr. Carter, is that an adequate motion, sir?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hartley, seconds. All right. Now, any discussion on the motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan on docket PZ twenty, one, zero, zero, three? Any discussion?
Okay. Yes, I have a question. I- is this going to be opened up for questions to the public also?
Well, you, you, well, you are, you had your opportunity. Uh, we're already, we're past that point. We're now vote, getting ready to vote on.
I mean, you, you never said it's open to the public for questions. I mean, I just have a couple of questions. I mean, I don't think it will interfere with anything that you're doing now, but I mean, you, you, you mentioned that it'd be open to public and then you never actually said it's open to the public now.
Well, I, I went through, we went through the doc, the procedure, hearing procedure, and we did, you know, ask for any testimony or questions uh, for this particular docket back earlier in, in the hearing. Mr. Carter, um, that would be out of order, would it not? At this point?
Well, the commission can allow him to speak if they want to.
Okay. All right. Are you okay with, uh, with allowing him to ask a couple of questions at this point? I don't, I don't hear any, I've got to see some thumbs up. So, okay, Mr. McCoy, go, go ahead.
Yeah. So, so my name is Alex McCoy.
Yeah, we need, hold on here just a minute, Mr. McCoy. We need to get you sworn in first. Let me get Mr. Hi-Chu to swear you in.
You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay. And then we need your name and address for the record.
Yeah. So Alex McCoy, 8800 Holly Gibson Road. And, uh, I actually own property adjacent to the Elite Homes va- phase two development on the north side.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. So, so I was wondering, um, you, you all mentioned 24 homes per year. Is that, uh, just for phase two? I know there's a phase one and phase two. So I guess my question is, would that be essentially 24 per year for each phase at the same time for a total of 48 per year? Or, um, is that 24 for, per year for the entire development?
Mr. Urban, do you want to address that?
It's, it's for this section and I would anticipate that they would go to record with certain sections in, uh, section one before going, going on to this development, but, uh, it, it raises a good question. I got to think about it for a minute. It, it really was the, the binding element was just for this section because the other one actually has, uh, its own calculations for school capacity.
Mr. Carter, anything else?
Okay. Yes. And then you, you had shown elevations of the homes, the typical homes that will be in the development. Um, just saw the front elevation. So are those homes going to be brick all the way around on all four, all four sides?
Mr. Chairman, you'd have to open the floor back up to the applicant if you want that answer.
Mr. Carter, is that, is that adequate? I mean, is that okay at this point? I'm a little uncomfortable with opening his hearing.
I'm not. Go ahead and let him answer it.
Okay, Mr. Talbot.
Um, let me make sure, uh, my mute is off. Uh, let me ask, uh, Scott Adams if he's on and he could address that question directly. I believe they are, but before I misspeak, I want to make sure I answer that question properly. Scott, are you available and on the call?
Yes.
And we need your name and address for the record. Can't really hear you very well. There's some kind of garbling.
Uh, Scott Adams, can you hear me?
A little better.
Sound like a robot though.
Go ahead and try to answer the question, sir.
The short answer is yes. They will be all brick homes.
Okay. Mr. McCoy, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. And, and then I have one, one more question. Uh, the, the tree line between my property and the development. Um, I know there's been some discussion about that. On, on one of the slides, it, it appeared that there were no trees shown there. And I was wondering if, if they're now going to do away with the trees and if so, are they putting up a privacy fence? Or, um, is that, I, I guess what the, what's the, uh, plan for that, uh, property line at the northern edge, uh, that borders my property?
Uh, Kevin, I think if I recall correctly, those lots on the north side were, were lengthened to allow us to, uh, uh, preserve some of that tree line. Is that correct?
I think he's asking Kevin Young.
Yeah, I, I had to get unmuted. I'm sorry. Um, yeah, at the TRC, I believe that was the question asked. So we revised our plan to make those lots a little deeper, uh, so we can try to accommodate those trees. It looks like, um, that your property is on a ridge. So all your, really most of your water is coming on to us. Uh, so yeah, the intent would be to try to preserve that tree line. It's beneficial for you and for our future, you know, residents. That answers the question.
All right. Mr. McCoy, does that answer your question, sir?
All, all right. Thank you. And, and that's all the questions I had. Sorry for the confusion with the, uh, with the time for, for public comments, but, but thank you for addressing those.
Okay. Thank you. At this point now, we'll get back to the discussion with the commissioners, uh, for, uh, the motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan on docket twenty, one dash zero, zero, three. Any further discussion from the commissioners? Okay. Seeing none, hearing no one. I'll call on Miss Hi-Chu to do the vote on the motion to approve on docket PZ twenty, one, zero, zero, three. Did I hear somebody have a question? Okay. Besides you, let's go ahead and do the vote. This is a motion to approve.
Hi, Ms. Bonnet? Yes. Ms. Davis? Oh, I see her now. Okay. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Falby?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Hapling?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
That is twelve to zero.
Okay. The motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan on docket PZ twenty, one, zero, zero, three has been approved on a vote of twelve to zero. All right. With that, do we need to continue on or do we want, need another short break? Everybody good with moving into the next docket?
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Talbot. All right. Let's just go ahead and move, uh, right on into our next doctored item, uh, from the city of La Grange. And besides you, as always, I'll call on you to read the docket, please.
And we have docket PZ dash twenty, one dash zero, zero, four. Application has been filed by the city of La Grange for the approval of a community facility review for the proposed Springs Park located at 100 South Second Avenue, La Grange. The property is owned R two A residential and R, and R four residential.
Okay. With that, uh, open it up now for the staff to make the presentation on this docket, please.
Sure. Good morning. Amy Alvey with Oldham County Planning and Development Services. I will, um, begin to share my screen here maybe. There we go. All right. All right. As Ms. Hi-Chu stated, this is a community facility review for the La Grange Station Springs Park, better known as Springs Park. The location, um, is at 100 South Second Avenue. It is comprised of multiple properties. They're in downtown La Grange and the existing zoning is R two, R two A and R four, and is approximately 7.8 acres. Under the division 400 of the community facility review, um, I'll read this so everyone understands what her role is. Any proposal for acquisition or disposition of land for public facilities or changes in character, location or extent of structures or land for public facilities excluding state and federal highways and public utilities and common carries by rails mentioned in this section shall be referred to the commission to be reviewed in light of its agreement with the comprehensive plan. And the commission shall, within 60 days from the date of its receipt, review the project and advise the referring body whether the project is, is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. If it does disapprove of the project, it shall state the reasons for the disapproval in writing and make suggestions for changing which will, in its opinion, better accomplish the objectives of the comprehensive plan. So again, community facility reviews are basically just a, uh, opportunity for the planning commission to review the project as well and, uh, with compliance to the comprehensive plan and then, uh, make any suggestions that they would see how it could better comply. Uh, this is, uh, specifically from KRS 10361 where it says any proposal affecting land use by any department, commission, board, authority, agency, or instrumentally of state government should not require approval of the local planning unit. Again, this is where the community facility review process comes in. So this is the, uh, aerial view here. You'll see the, the parcels outlined in red are the subject parcels that will become part of the park. This shows your existing zoning of, uh, in the yellow of R two, the light brown of R two A and the dark brown of C, I'm sorry, of, um, R four. The applicant is proposing to construct a new park that will include a market pavilion, playground, spray ground, amphitheater, skate area slash stage concession stand slash boot, sound booth and walking trails. The park will be completed in phases and will stretch from Main Street, um, at South Second Avenue to Jaeger. So this is the overall plan. Again, it stretches from, uh, here at Main Street and then along Second Avenue down to Jaeger. This is a zoomed in version of the plan. You'll see it again where we had previously spoke of the market pavilion, the spray ground. Um, this is a skate area slash stage area, um, a mode amphitheater. And then there are continuous, uh, walking trails that tie back into Second Street all the way down to Jaeger as well. This is the lower portion. Again, this is, um, where the walking trail, walking paths come out and down to Jaeger and then where it also ties into, um, Adam Street for, um, uh, vehicle traffic. The plane shows parking internal to the site and will also utilize public parking throughout downtown La Grange and have connect and will have to connect to existing side, the sidewalk network. According to the applicant's uh, letter, the park will be a free destination that will serve the entire community and especially help families who struggle transporting their children to public pools and parks. Uh, it will anchor the historic district and be an economic stabilizer for many locally owned businesses that are within a few blocks. Um, and provided in with your staff report, the applicant also provided letters with the, uh, support from La Grange Main Street Program, Oldham County Chamber of Commerce and La Grange Farmers Market. So I, uh, stole these off of Google Earth because most everything was snow covered and it just looked white at that point. Uh, so this is looking at Main Street into the existing, uh, uh, city parking lot here as the existing skate park. This is looking from Main Street again into the site. You'll see from the site map at the bottom corner of your screen. And again, this is, uh, looking again into the site from Main Street. This is looking from Second and Main. Again, this is the existing parking, um, lot area and the skate park. And then it stretches all the way back here into the grassy area. This is the one, um, you'll see that the cutout here on the little map, this is the City Place parking area. This is the intersection of Second and Third. This is where Third loops around and you'll see again on the map here where that intersection occurs. This is looking into more of the park area, the Springs portion. This is the intersection of Second and Adam Street. And again, if you use your location here of the location map, the red arrow shows you approximately where that is on the plan. And then this is, uh, Jaeger Avenue near Jane Street. Jane Street is down here. This is the Oldham County Public Library, so they'll have connectivity here that will allow them to cross, um, Jaeger to get to the public library. So again, in summary, um, this is just a community facility review that, uh, is before the planning commission where they look, um, to see, advise the referring body, which would be the city of La Grange, whether the project is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And again, if it does disapprove of the project, it shall state the reasons of disapproval in writing and make suggestions of changes, which will, in its opinion, better accomplish the objectives of the comprehensive plan. And that is all that I have, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Turn my mic back on here. Uh, Mr. Urban, anything else that you need to add or any other staff member needs to add on this application?
Not at this time, nope.
Okay.
Mr. Jeffries?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Jim Solomon, county engineer, I'll just add briefly, uh, through the development of this and, uh, project, the design team, engineers, architects, and other design team members, city representatives have included, uh, my office and, uh, Curry's Fork, Curry's Fork Watershed Coordinator, um, in review, regarding all the general design and what ordinance, uh, they'll, they'll be required to address and adhere to in the county, um, including, uh, working with the Division of Water, uh, specifically with regard to the spray park, uh, discharge. So, um, again, we've been included in, in discussions and, and meetings and will
Okay. All right, Mr. Solomon, thank you. Uh, with that, we'll now move into the presentation by the applicant. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, let me go back to, uh, quick commissioners. Any commissioners have questions for staff? Uh, Mr. Hampton?
Is the seven point eight acres the entire proposed size of the park? Is that all of it?
Correct. And maybe a clarifying point for the applicant, but that is what I took from the plan and the application.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for, from commissioners? Okay, seen none. We'll now move into the presentation by the applicant or representative and others in support of the application. Mayor John Black, are you going to be making the presentation, sir?
I'm gonna be saying a few things, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, could I get you sworn in? Is, is there anyone else that will be speaking on behalf of this application?
Yeah, we could have, uh, depending on how this goes, we could have three, three or four maybe, uh, speaking. So I assume you'd want to swear us all at the same time?
Yes, sir, please. Ms. Hightew, if you would, let's swear them in.
He solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
I do.
Mayor Black, just name an address for the record, please.
Um, John W. Black, 108 North Fifth Street, La Grange, Kentucky.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I just want to come today very briefly. Uh, I feel like we here in the city have assembled a great team to put this, uh, park together here in our downtown. For those who don't know, uh, this is just a continuation of us trying to make us a very unique town here in our city. Um, this goes back as far as probably as Mr. Urban would remember, uh, the University of Cincinnati coming in here into La Grange probably 15 years ago and laying out a, a idea and a game concept plan to try to, um, uh, give us a pathway to create a vibrant downtown with historical preservation, with our main courthouse, our, our amenities here in our downtown, and trying to make it a friendly, livable community. So, um, this park idea, um, has been around for a number of years, but the team that you will hear from today is primarily, uh, made up of, uh, a committee made up of, of volunteers and headed up by, uh, Ann Zimlich, who's a former city council person here in La Grange, and she actually began this as a, um, strategic team for La Grange, but once she became a not a city council person, she wanted to continue and lead the way to bring this Springs Park idea about. So, um, it did begin with Cincinnati years ago, trying to lay out a, a framework, how we can make this town interesting, and that's what we are planning to present to you today in a short presentation. I will say that Amy Alvey does such a great job in her presentation. We could, uh, ask, is there any closing statements by anyone and see if anyone has any questions? Otherwise, it's pretty much been done, but uh, I would like to defer to Ann Zimlich, who's our Springs Park Committee Chairperson. She's done a wonderful job in conjunction with our great architectural team of Environs Jones out of Crestwood, Kentucky, which they've just recently completed, the, uh, Maples Park idea. So they're bringing some of those to La Grange, but I've told Jones, Enviren Jones, I want ours to be better than Crestwood's because we've got to beat Crestwood if we can. So, uh, they promised me they will do that. So with that being said, uh, I was looking at my phone at my music a while ago, and there's a song, "I'm So Excited" by the Pointer Sisters. So we're so excited about this, uh, happening here in La Grange, and hopefully that the, uh, planning commission will see what we're trying to do here and make our city uh, unique in a more fashionable way as we try to put this product together. So if no one has any questions for me, that's what this is about, hopefully to break ground in early summer. And I do have a financing plan in, in progress. Um, I'm not going to raise anyone's taxes, as far as I can tell. Uh, we've got good city reserves and, uh, going to do a little bond deal with this project, and hopefully we can, uh, get it done. And I do have full support from the council, and I know these ladies coming on will say we've had many, many public participation meetings to get us to this point with our general public in La Grange here. So, uh, if no one has anything for me, uh, Ann Zimlich, are you there? Would you like to go next?
Yeah, I'm here, and, um, I'm gonna share my screen real quick.
Okay, Ms. Zimlich, if you would, just name an address for the record, please.
Uh, Ann Zimlich, and my address is 3030 Fallen Wood Lane in La Grange.
Okay, thank you.
And hold on a sec. I shared the rights. I'm not great at doing these things, so just bear with me. Can you all see the, does it say La Grange Springs Park on your screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so thanks, everybody. And Mayor, I really do appreciate your excitement for the project. You have, uh, propelled us through some times when I never thought the meetings would end, so I do really appreciate it. Um, again, my name is Ann Zimlich, and I am a former city council member, and I've been chairing the project, the La Grange Springs Park, for a few years now. Uh, just to give you a brief overview of who all is on the committee and who all has been offering insight, um, we've had good, uh, leadership on the committee from lots of different sectors in the community. Um, from city government, of course, we've got the mayor, John Black. We have both former mayors, Bill Lambon and Joe Davenport. Uh, from the Oldham County Chamber of Commerce, we have David Bazanas from the La Grange Main Street Program. We have Sandy Fokes, the executive director there. And we have Russ Morris, who is the Farmers Market Manager. And as well on the La Grange Park Committee, we have Hope Gardner and Joe Davenport also and on that committee in his role as city council member. And then we have, um, some private citizens, myself, Karen Eldridge, who's a former, uh, Main Street Director and former business owner on Main Street, and Mary Bolton is former city's council member as well as an adjoining property owner to the park. And our design team leads that are also on this call are Sarah Jones and Jody Smiley, so we appreciate their help and being here today. Um, just a quick history, that Mayor touched on it briefly. Um, this is something that's been going on now for several years. Uh, the city had, um, some property that it owned in the second and Main Street area that it was being very underutilized for its location. And we really wanted to come up with something exciting there that would benefit the citizens of the city as well as the local businesses. Um, it was under Mayor Davenport who, uh, tasked some city employees and our vision committee on the council to start looking into the possibility of, uh, using, uh, putting in a park in the central downtown area. And so we started doing a lot of different, um, testing in the area. We did several surveys and just test the public interest and what the public would like to see. And the top four choices, uh, came out as a splash pad, a playground, an amphitheater, and a farmers market pavilion. Um, throughout those last couple of years, the city purchased additional land that was adjoining the property that happened to be up and available for sale at really good pricing. So we were able to then even connect the Main Street section of the park down to the library, which really excited us because of the walkability prospect of that and incorporating it in with the commerce trail. Um, several more years of discussions and meetings, several public meetings to get feedback, and now we're into 2021. And we are, uh, in the process of finalizing construction documents, and as Mayor said, hopefully groundbreaking, uh, sometime this summer. Um, this is an overview of the park that Amy's already showed you. Um, I'm gonna focus in on Phase One, which is what we are working on right now for the, with the construction documents. Um, just to acclimate you, Main Street is along the top border, and Second Avenue comes down the right-hand side of your screen. Uh, the corner here will be a plaza, and we are speaking with the Arts Council on getting some type of really nice showcase to have a place there to represent the town and our history. There's going to be a market pavilion. Um, this will be primarily for the farmers market, um, but there's going to be a lot of dual usage with this pavilion. Um, there's going to be another plaza over here that can serve as overfill for the market pavilion or overflow for events and concerts. Um, we're gonna have a splash pad in this vicinity. A multi-level playground for di, with different, um, options for children from toddler up to pre-teen. We've got a large open green space in this area. Um, the entry into the park will be off of Second Avenue. Uh, it'll be a one-way entry in here, uh, with options to turn into this parking spot area here next to the pavilion, or uh, folks can travel on down to this area back here, um, that is behind this small house at 309 Main. Um, we have two retention basins in this vicinity. One is dedicated for the splash pad runoff, and the other is dedicated for stormwater. Um, this is just a overall, uh, architectural rendering of the pavilion that we're planning. Um, this is not complete, but, um, very, getting very close. Uh, if you'll notice in the bottom left picture, um, there are shades that can be brought down over the openings in the pavilion to make it more of an all-weather, um, type facility so that we can keep out the crosswinds and the farmers market pavilion can operate um, when it's colder months, or we can also have special, um, events or galas, uh, within the pavilion itself. Um, this is going to be a restroom building that's going to be adjacent to the pavilion. Um, it's going to also have some of the, uh, mechanical workings for the splash pad. Um, these are some of the ideas that are coming up for the playground area. It's gonna have stuff, uh, available for small children up to larger children. Uh, there's, uh, gonna be some embankment slides along here with some bouldering, uh, just to serve as a retention wall there. Um, this is our area for the splash pad that we're designing. Uh, we wanted to keep the splash pad area very multifunctional since it really is only going to be able to be a splash pad for a few months out of the year. Uh, so all of the water elements will be within the ground so that when, um, it's cooler months and we want to have an arts and crafts festival, or we want to have a summer or some type of concert series, uh, we can utilize this space as just an open space, um, and have it do, have dual functionality there. Um, Phases Two and Three, uh, hopefully we will be able to kind of roll right into those, uh, pretty quickly once we start working on the construction of Phase One. Um, the road at that point will continue on and exit down in this section of the park. Um, we have an easement granted to us to cross this private property here, which will then allow for there to be a walking path all the way from the Main Street area down to Jaeger. Um, that's gonna be a paved path, but then there's also going to be some natural trails as well in that vicinity. Um, and in that area, this is a rendering of what we're hoping for, for the amphitheater. Um, we have dual functionality with the amphitheater as well, since it's only going to serve probably, uh, with events on the weekends. Uh, we have, um, the stage of the amphitheater actually doubles as a concrete skate park with lots of different varying levels for skaters to use so that um, there will always be something going on there. Um, and that's it. And I did want to incorporate, just so this is an aerial view of the current, um, area. Um, just to kind of give you an idea of what is being used for now, how it looks now, and the potential, uh, down the road with this. That's all I've got.
All right, Ms. Simp, thank you very much. Um, Mayor, is there anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of this application?
I would like to give the opportunity for, um, Sarah Jones or Gant Jones, if they're on, and/or Jody Smiley, uh, if you'd like to add anything and tell us how, how you are, uh, uh, going about this, how far along you are, and, and anything you all would like to add to the comments. Do y'all have anything?
Um, this is Sarah Kopje Jones for the record, and I can state my address, 2910 Darby Creek, Crestwood. Um, I am the, uh, Jody and I, and Jody's on the call as well. Um, and if she wants to join in too, we can do that, but um, we are the lead designers on the project, so we can answer any questions, um, as far as getting as technical as we, we, we want to. Um, however, at th, this time, Ann did a great job, um, of explaining everything, so I really don't have too much, but the Phase One, uh, that we're working on right now, um, is very intensive. There's a lot of, um, a lot of things that are going on with this site, um, actually that are, you know, uh, that some people might have history with, um, and know about. So, um, is a really, gonna be a very big improvement to, um, to the area, we believe. Um, and so right now, we're, we're moving into about 90% construction documents for the Phase One. So we're, like Ann said, we're getting really close to that time, and we're, um, hoping to go out to bid around, uh, May or so and get some groundbreaking happening in June so that we can have maybe a nice groundbreaking, a, a small event, COVID-friendly, safe. Um, but, um, I think I'll leave it at that. We're very excited to be part of the team and county residents, so, um, uh, that's, that's where I'll leave that.
All right, Ms. Jones, thank you. Anyone else?
Um, I'm Jody Smiley. I'm working with Sarah. I can give my address real quickly. It's 4426 Greenbrier Road in Louisville.
Okay.
Um, Ann covered everything. Sarah covered everything else. Uh, there's not a lot to add. Technically speaking, um, part of the issue that, um, neighbors south of the, of the, uh, existing park site are experiencing, um, sometimes stormwater runoff that's excessive, and we are working with Jim Solomon, as he already stated, we're working with him.
Oh, seem to have a bandwidth issue here. Ms. Smiley, are you still on the call? Not sure what happened there. Mayor, do you, uh, you want to add anything here?
Uh, are we, are you, are you asking for a closing statement, or?
Well, no, not yet. I, it looks like she's froze here on the screen, so I'm not sure whether that will correct itself or not.
I told her I had, I only had $50 allocated for her to speak, so she, I guess, used it up, Kevin.
Okay, all right.
I think she, what, the point that she was going to say, I'm sorry to interrupt, was that she, um, that with this project, we're actually introducing, um, components that will, uh, help mitigate those, uh, down, downwaste stormwater issues that some folks might be having. So with the introduction of, uh, items like permeable pavers and rain gardens, um, in the parking lot area as well as curbing, um, we are taking area as well as curbing, we are taking the water to both a upper basin and a lower basin. So it has, it's not just going down a hillside anymore and into people's properties.
Okay, Ms. Jones, thank you. All right. Is there anyone else on that would like to speak in support of this application? Anyone else that would like to speak in support of? Okay, let me move into the next portion of the hearing. Just, this is a hearing, public hearing. Do we have any testimony and questions by those opposing the application? Is there anyone here that would have any questions or would be opposed to this application? Okay, seen none. Well, now moving on, if we can, let's go back to the gallery view on the screen so we can see everybody on the, on the screen here. Ms. Zimlich, I'm not sure if that's, if you were sharing your screen or not. There we go. All right, let's go into questioning of the applicant and those, there's no one, money opposing the application by the commission. Is there any questions for any of the folks, either the mayor or any of the folks that have spoken on behalf of this application this morning? I'm sorry. Oh, Ms. Fowley, go ahead.
This is for the mayor. He says that hopefully these improvements could start as early as this summer. I was just wondering when that first phase, if that occurred, might be finished. Could it be fall that the marketplace could be open?
Mr. Fowley, no. The marketplace, the actual farmer's market, we understand it, it's going to sort of remain in its same location for this next season, being in the plaza in front of the courthouse, plus the parking spaces on the, you know, the parking space there on, on the, I'd say that'd be the north side of Main Street. So that's where the farmer's market will be taking place this summer. This will be, as I understand, about a year built out, so we're hoping to be up and operational by next summer, but not this summer. So it's going to take about one, one year to build this project and we'll hopefully have kids in the spray ground in June or May or June of next year.
And when you say this project, is that's phase one or all phases?
That'd just be phase one only. And what Anne Zimlich described, when she referred to the parking lot behind that house, we, we have been acquiring property in the general area to answer Mr. Hampton's question about how much acreage and I think we've acquired probably five or six or so parcels probably there in the last year or two. So as parcels come up, we take a look at them and see perhaps if, if that's some, some parcel that we have interest in. If we do, we try to talk to the person selling and see perhaps if we could add that to our downtown green space park area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Penny, do you have a question?
Yes. Are there any structures that are going to be removed or proposed to be removed in, in this project?
No, no structures I know of. You know, we're dealing with a old remnants of a seat, construction, demolition, debris landfill that was put there directly across from the, the Haven Memorial Baptist Church. We cannot, we cannot go through the top area of that particular area that's protected for different environmental reasons, but the whole grading of this whole site will change and we will be bringing supposedly earth to the sides of that actual dome of the original landfill or construction demolition debris landfill. And I'm sort of surprised of the pictures that were shown here today, how much, what that looks like presently and what it's going to look like in a year from now. It's just going to be a transformation that I just think people are going to be surprised how we're going to turn that whole frontage area around for the, for the enjoyment of our community and the downtown efforts.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the mayor? Ms. Bonnet?
Actually, this is for either Anne or Sarah, and it's part question, part comment or suggestion. In the whole park area, the paved paths and especially the playground and the splash pad, are you all looking at making those wheelchair accessible? I know that the playground at Creasy Mahan up here in Goshen has recently added a lot of playground features for children in wheelchairs. And while it's, I can't really relate, it, it looked fabulous. I can imagine how those children feel when they go to a playground and they can't really do anything. But just for the whole project, is that something you're looking at in the design?
Absolutely with the, all of the pathways, I believe, I, Sarah can speak to this more specifically, but I think it's definitely all the pathways are ADA and we, the playground in the splash pad area will be ADA because there's not going to be any above-ground features except for the bouldering, but you can walk or wheel around those very easily. And there's going to be features on the playground too that either children can, they have the right height so that kids can transfer to them. There was, we don't have the specific drawings on those yet. There was some ideas in the last meeting that our playground designer was discussing. We just didn't have photographs of what those were, and I don't know if Sarah knows anymore about what those are going to be, but the playground area definitely is going to be a, most of it's going to be a poured surface. There is some area, smaller area that's going to have mulch, but most of it's going to be an area where they, a wheelchair can easily transport through.
I would suggest if either of you have time to come out to the Creasy Mahan site and just look at what they've put in, because it is really a neat place.
Okay. Yes, I have been there and I agree, and I agree with Anne. We, we have ADA pathways as much as we can. Obviously, Second Street is, is on a quite steep grade, but we're trying to make sure there's ADA connections throughout the park as well as the, you know, the spray ground is completely ADA accessible and the, the playground as well with certain elements. The train element is what Anne is referring to, which is one of our kind of showpiece theme thematic pieces that I think everybody will be really excited about in town. And it will be ADA accessible, and that will be one of the biggest things. But we also have other, other things that are ADA accessible, especially the surf thing. Yes, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for commissioners? Mr. Hampton?
I think John could probably address this. What is going to, how's the spring, for those that aren't familiar with the topography, how's the spring down there going to be affected?
Well, Barry, actually, you're correct. The probably, the, the way this name of this park came about is there is a city spring right just below the Rollins parking lot that was the water supply for the city of La Grange in its early, early days. We actually have pictures where buggies were taken to that spring and people got their water there. But I think to answer your question, we have recently obtained the property to the south of the spring through a land purchase. We did not take the house, but we took the rear, the rear portion of the property and bought it and extracted that from the original house, and they sold the house off, but we wanted the actual property. I think with the design team, I believe our plan is in phase two, Barry, to, that spring could be such a historical land site and, and place for people to just go there with a certain amount of design work and, and effort that that spring runs continuously. It never stops. So that's part of, I think, phase two. We, we want to really highlight that spring and what it meant to the history of our city here. So it will be dealt with. It will always run as we understand it, and hopefully Jones Enviren, or Enviren Jones in their second phase two design, we can maybe have some, I've even been looking towards some donations types of folks who might want to take that on as a project and be one of the donators to bring that springs back to what it was in its early days.
Thank you, John. I think that could be another real focal point of this whole, whole project, though. I was just concerned about that.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Hampton?
No, and I did not ever take my buggy down there to.
I understand. Any other questions from any other commissioners? Yes. Hi, Mr. Smith?
Yeah. In regards to things like the open event space and the stage area and the proposed market of the pavilion, are these intended to only be for like official city designated activities, or this is going to be open for other businesses or community organizations to book?
I can answer that. The, no, the, the farmer's market will have priority, but typically they're, you know, they're pretty limited in how much time that they need it. And one of the, we're also getting some US Department of Agriculture grant money for that pavilion. But no, it is our, it is the city's intention, I believe, and John may follow up on this, to be able to let or rent the pavilion out for special events if there's a local organization that wants to have a gala or possibly even a wedding, you know, concert series, et cetera, for Main Street, things like that. So, yes.
Secondly, I had kind of an idea with this too. You're probably already looking into it, but mobile charging device stations, a possibility of getting that even co-opted with something like AT&amp;T or another company to offset the cost. But I know a lot of kids these days, everyone's got their, their mobile, their cameras and their phones and just having a little port to plug in a USB somewhere. I mean, I understand it's not part of this plan, but that could be something, would be a great feature.
Something to think about. Thank you.
Okay. Any, any other questions? Any other questions? Okay. I guess, Mayor, do you want to have a final statement here before we offer discussion on this?
Nothing other than, as you all know, the city of La Grange is getting ready to really go through a construction downtown transformation, first being the courthouse project that should break ground, maybe with the demolition of the old courthouse probably in the spring. So we're going to have two good years of total downtown issues, but I think in the end product, it's all going to be coming together. I think one reason we chose Enviren Jones to be our architect is to how to tie the, the history of our town into our park as a continuation of our main street, coming from the west to the, to the east and, or east to the west. But I appreciate the opportunity for us to show you today what we have and, and, and can't wait till we get it started and hopefully with the finishing of the architectural plans, we'll be ready to go here. So we have the train museum that's sort of on one end of our downtown area that we're trying to build up as a train idea to try to attract tourists to come to our train, the old original depot here in our city, and will be anchored on the other end by our Springs Park project. So we're just trying to build the city out to make it a fun, interesting city and try to create some housing downtown where people can have a livable and walkable community to enjoy each and every day.
All right, Mayor, thank you very much. And with that, docket PZ 21004 is, is closed, and we will now move into, I'll ask Mr. Urban to outline what we need to consider here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Amy outlined in her presentation, this is a community facility review, and, and the commission's job is to review and advise whether the proposal is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. I'm going to make an assumption here that nobody's in objection or finds that there's some parts of the comprehensive plan that are not being met. I'm going to offer a couple that I believe are, and there's many. Under the community facility review, there's goal CF3, which is to increase efforts to minimize the effects of stormwater and runoff by encouraging more creative site design measures and promoting green infrastructure. You heard during the presentation to the applicant that they're fully intending to do that in, in cooperation with not only the Currys Fork Watershed Manager, but also the County Engineers Office. Goal CF4 is to maintain Oldham County's high level of educational enrichment opportunities through continued investment in human and physical resources necessary to meet educational, informational, and diverse recreational needs of growing population. I think they've hit this pretty right on. Objective CF1-2, the development priority area should be given consideration for expansion or new construction of community facilities and services as an incentive for development to locate within these areas. I think if we, the city continues to promote this project, you will see additional investment in the general area. And the last that I'm going to propose is that CF, objective CF1-3, inform the community and provide special notice to all interested parties early in the process when developing or expanding community facilities. I know that they have had many, many community meetings regarding Springs Park and have reached out to a lot of agencies and utilities and doing that, so I believe they've met that objective as well. If the commission so, is so inclined, I think your motion would be to find that it is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, in particular those for two goals and two objectives that I mentioned.
All righty, Mr. Urban, thank you. Commissioners, do you, at this point, the chair would entertain a motion on docket PZ 21005. We have a motion. Everyone speak up at once. Okay, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to, to, is it approval?
Well, it's accept, except because it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Goal, the goals CF3 and CF4 and the objective CF1-2 and CF1-3.
Incorporating in my motion is what Jim Urban just outlined as stated.
Okay. Mr. Carter, is that adequate?
Yes.
Okay. With that, do we have a second? Mr. Hampton seconds? I see multiple seconds. Well, I recognize Mr. Hampton. All right, at this point, any discussion on docket PZ 21004, motion of approval on the community facility review?
Hi, everyone.
Yes, sir. Mr. Douglas?
I have, I guess, I guess a question for Mr. Urban or for Mr. Carter. Would it be wise for me to abstain from this vote since I'm on the Oldham County Stormwater Board and I'm familiar with this project along with Jim Solomon, based on the MS4 program?
No.
No?
Okay. And my response would be if you have no personal financial gain and/or if, unless you find this project to be objectionable for some reason, I don't think you need to abstain.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, seen none. We'll, did I hear somebody? Okay, we will proceed to vote on the motion to approve the community facilities review as outlined, and at this point, I'll call on Ms. Haichu to take the vote, please.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Hampton, yes. I thought you said Halfley.
Mr. Halfley?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Ms. Bonnet?
Yes.
That is 12th year.
All right. Docket PZ 21004 has been approved on a vote of 12 to 0. Mayor and all the folks that have presented today, thank you all very much. We look forward to this project moving forward, and I think it's going to be a great improvement for the city of La Grange and for Oldham County in general. So thank you all for making the presentation.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right. It's 11:30, Commissioners. We have one more docket, and let me just announce again that docket PZ 21005 was has been deferred to our March 23 meeting, but we do have one more docket that we will consider. But let's take about a 10-minute recess here and be back by 11:40. So thank you all.